Madam Chair, Salas Argarza?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Here.
Commissioner Bud?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
And Commissioner Taichman is absent. We have a quorum present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you ma'am. And could you read us the rules for public comment, please?
Ma'am. Citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at the city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specified item is being considered in order of the agenda.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. For anyone that would like to come and speak on anything other than tonight's agenda, please come forward. If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment and move on to the approval of absences for Commissioner Munoz.
Make a motion that we approve the absence for Commissioner Munoz.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes for November 12, 2025.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. So, on tonight's agenda, we're going to go ahead and start... We're going to do first Item C, the public hearing discussion and possible action for Item Number 10 and 11. So, we will start that first and then we'll go and start the consent public hearing and discussion for possible actions for A and B. Mr. Demus?
Yes, we're going to begin with Item Number 10, which is an amendment to the roadway master plan from Mobility CC, which is an element of the comprehensive plan regarding Amanda Lane. That is directly related to Item Number 11, which is a master preliminary plat. So, we'll pull up that presentation. I believe we have some folks from traffic engineering in the audience that'll kind of run through that PowerPoint pretty quickly.
There it is. Can you hear me? Excellent. Good evening. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. My name is Jorge Chavez. I'm a traffic engineer with Public Works Department. Today, I will present an item to amend the city's transportation master plan. The amendment requests to reduce the proposed A2 arterial to a C1 collector within the Riverstone Trails development. Do I use this for the apartment? Thank you. To provide some background, the Riverstone Trails development is located west of FM 1889 and south of FM 1694. We'll get an image right there in a few minutes. Based on the information submitted by the developer's engineer, we understand the following: The development will be developed over three phases. At completion, the development will contain approximately 226 units. This information was used to determine peak daily AM and PM trips generated by the development. This traffic data is the justification for the amendment request, which I will discuss in the next slide. A little bit more background. This slide provides background on the proposed request and the city requirements that are found in the infrastructure design manual. Public Works received a request to amend the proposed extension of Amanda Lane. Amanda Lane currently is identified as an A2 secondary arterial on the roadway master plan. This would require the developer to dedicate 100 feet of right-of-way and construct a roadway with four travel lanes. This type of roadway can accommodate an average of 20,000 to 32,000 vehicles per day. That's an A2 arterial. The developer is requesting to reduce the classification to a C1 collector, which requires a 60-foot right-of-way dedication and construction of a roadway with two travel lanes. Additionally, this would be consistent with the existing section of Amanda Lane to the right of the proposed development. And I'll show you the image right now in a few minutes. The proposed traffic generated would not exceed the average daily trips for a C1 collector. That's additional information. And here we are. This slide demonstrates the following. The proposed Riverstone Trail development is highlighted in blue. The three proposed master planned streets impacting this development are as follows: The A2 arterial, shown as a red dash line in the east-west direction on the south portion of the development, at the bottom. We have a C1 collector shown as a green dash line in the east-west direction right in the center... Does this have a laser? Right in the center, close to Lake Athens. And also, a C1 collector shown as a green dash line in the north-south direction on the west side of the development. And so, I'm going up-down. It reaches the north of the road. The developer is constructing all three master planned streets, but is requesting a modification to only the A2 arterial, which is highlighted in yellow, as you can see there. That's our focus for this amendment. Next slide. This slide illustrates the existing A2 arterial requested for amendment. So, as per our current adopted roadway master plan, this is what needs to be dedicated. The developer is required to construct an A2 arterial, shown in bold red, per the current plan. And again, A2 arterial, that's a 100-foot right-of-way with approximately four lanes of travel. This is what they're proposing. This slide illustrates the request amendment to the master plan. The developer is requesting to reduce the roadway classification from an A2 arterial to a C1 collector, shown in bold green. And by the way, we're only focusing the section within the development, that bold green part right there. The master plan identifies each street within a parcel as a project. We are only focusing on the project within the Riverstone Trails development, which is a C1 collector. And the roadway master plan specifies this project as Project 1-AI. However, for the purpose and discussion and transparency, we have shown in a tentative alignment, the black dash line to the left of the development, that would maintain the east-west connectivity between Riverstone Trails development, shown in blue, and County Road or Country Road 73, right Morvac Road. Moving on. In summary, the proposed number of units and traffic generated falls within the threshold of a C1 collector. The proposed modification will also maintain the two-lane configuration that currently exists along Amanda Lane. Staff supports the request and recommends Planning Commission the amendment to reduce the classification of the roadway from an A2 arterial to a C1 collector within the proposed limits of the development. Thank you, and I stand by for any questions.
Thank you. And for the record, Commissioner Hendrick is abstaining from this vote, so I just wanted to clarify this. Commissioners, do we have... No. Andrew, you're going to go over Item 11?
Yes. Item 11, if you'd like to hear them both at the same time. Item 11 is the master preliminary plat for Riverstone Trail, which is roughly 69 acres in size, located on Northwest Boulevard. As Jorge mentioned in his presentation, staff has reviewed it along with the technical review committee and determined that it meets all requirements of the UDC as well as state law, and we recommend approval. Of course, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Yes. Is there any way we could pull up the proposed amendment again? The map?
Sure.
Yeah, the amendment slide. There we go. Right there. Okay. I have no issue with A2 versus C1. The thing that I kind of... I'm a little bit concerned about is we're creating a very similar issue like we've seen with Fred's folly, where you have a jog, you know? And if we make this amendment and we've got this jog on this property to the south, who owns that property to the south?
We didn't look up that information of the actual property owner. Since it's... As a line on the map, someday, when that comes in to be plotted, who knows when, is when we would address it that time, because ownership can change between now and then.
Yeah. I just, you know, it just reminds me kind of like Fred's folly, where you have this kind of jog. And so, it ends up on the UTP plan, but, you know, then whenever that property gets developed, then it's like, what do you do with that little trapezoid, you know?
Right. This approach was kind of the middle ground to respect the design that is being proposed and still facilitate that the roadway master plan will ultimately connect to County Road 73. Of course, what the UDC does allow is we can still adjust, so this is never a set-in-stone design. If at some point in the future, it needs to be a hard 90-degree turn or have a little bit more curve, depending on what that future design on the adjacent property, we, of course, can work with the property owner without having to come forward with a formal amendment.
Yeah. I just, as we continue, and I'm okay with this, but as we continue to annex and develop more in these areas, especially where you've got these subdivisions like along Amanda Lane that are, you know, not built to city standards and all the complications that go along with that, that we just kind of look at it a little more closely and try to amend the UTP in a responsible way to where we don't end up with a bunch of these, you know, kind of weird situations that... They're no problem right now, but, you know, 20 years from now, whenever Fred's folly, whenever the neighborhoods on the other side of the ditch were developed and then there's no alignment, and then you just end up with these issues down the road on, well, does that jog go on my property or does it go on your property? And how do we address this and make it equitable and everything else? It just seems like by making these amendments, we're creating a little bit of an issue for property owners, you know? Whenever that farmer decides to sell his land, you know, there's going to be an issue there down the road.
Yes, sir.
So, that's all I had.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or for the developer? If not, then I'll go ahead and open up the consent public hearing for Items 10 and 11. If anybody would like to come and speak on behalf of Items 10 and 11, please come forward. State your name and your city for the record, sir.
Moses Mostagassi, District 5. So, the only reason I come up here is because I was also the chairman of the impact fee committee that looked at these master plans. And completely agree with you, Mr. Miller. So, these UTP amendments are interesting to say the best. If you bring back the map, you'll notice that it's always never had the alignment. So, Amanda Lane itself never followed the initial UTP. If you look at Lake Athens, that never actually followed the UTP. So, eventually, whoever starts the property or starts the road and where it's at, you've got to try to follow that connection. So, why they showed an alternate route that maybe ties into the big red line, ultimately, that can still go straight and then tie into County Road 70 at some point. So, it doesn't need to necessarily have that veer. But usually, the UTP right now is trying to put it in between two property owners so both people share the cost, the expense, and really the easement that comes with that type of road. But in this situation, just even going from an A2, that's probably something our committee missed, because you have a county road section. It's a 20-foot county road section. It's always going to be a county road section. An A2 is 100-foot right-of-way, four lanes with a median. And really, what they did was still say, let's still do a C1 collector, in hopes that the neighboring property eventually annexes, but they still have the right not to and still tie in with a county road section. Even though they might have to follow an alignment, they don't have to follow exactly the road width or the, what is it, the street design. So, that's all I wanted to clarify. But thank you.
Thank you. Any others who would like to come and speak on Items 10 or 11? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Items 10 and 11 as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent public hearing and possible action for Items A and B. And we are going to go through Items 2 through 9 with the exception of Number 7. We're going to pull that item. So, at this time, I'd like to... Andrew, if you could speak on Items 2 through 9.
Yes. Back to the regular schedule, all items minus Number 7, so we will get through this consent fairly quickly. Beginning with Item 2 under Plats, preliminary plat at Lakes Northwest, Unit 3. Item Number 3, a replat of Brooklyn Edition. Item Number 4, replat of La Palmera Mall. Item Number 5, replat of HF Nolte subdivision. Item Number 6, replat of Don Patricio, Lot 46. Staff has reviewed the following listed plats and determined with the technical review committee that they meet the requirements of the UDC as well as Texas Local Government Code. Staff recommends approval. Under Letter B, Items 8, which is Case ZN 8987, Clinton Katherine Tucker, under District 4. This is a request from the FR Farm Rural District to the RS15 Single Family 15 District. Staff recommends approval. Item Number 9, zoning case ZN 9032, ZBK LLC, which is currently outside the city limits, but is going through the annexation process, located in District 5. The request is from the FR Farm Rural District to the RS22 Single Family 22 District. Staff also recommends approval. That concludes tonight's consent agenda. If there are any questions on any of the items read in, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Andrew. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Just making sure we consulted with Ben Pollock on Item Number 8.
Yes. The request, I know it's a little funny seeing RS15. The reason for that is these are extremely deep and narrow lots, so in order to meet the UDC requirement of a 50-foot lot width, the largest zoning classification we could go to is RS15. The acreage would allow half-acre, even larger. They are under the magic five-acre number to meet FR, but they are too narrow to be RS22 or one of the larger lot configurations. So, we had to go with RS15. We did clear it with Ben Pollock, and we explained that the rules under the military overlay will prevent further subdivision of nothing greater than one unit per acre. So, even if by some chance, one day, somebody tried to subdivide it, the MCAD will not let them do it.
Okay. So, all I needed to know is make sure you talked to Ben and everything was cool.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? If not, then I'll go ahead and open up the consent public hearing for Items 2 through 9 with the exception of 7. If anyone would like to come and speak on these items, please come forward. If not, then I'll go ahead and close the consent public hearing and entertain... Oh, somebody? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like to speak. I'm going to be a lady.
Okay. Yes, you may.
Thank you. It's actually on Item 8.
Please state your name and city you live in.
I live in Corpus Christi. My name is Nicole Russell. I live in the Ramfield Road area, not on Ramfield Road, but in the Golden Oaks subdivision. I'm here to speak in strong opposition to this zoning change. I saw that in the backup plan for the county... I'm sorry, for the city, the city had recommended this zoning change and had claimed that it's comparable with the character of the surrounding land. That is absolutely not true. All of the surrounding land is either residential estate land or also farmland. This is all areas that are on septic system and septic tanks right now. It also, the packet claims that it conforms with the present use and zoning. That's not true. Currently, this is residential rural area, putting high-density houses up to three per acre would completely change the character of our neighborhood. Also, that it won't have a negative impact on our neighborhood. We already have very significant drainage issues in our neighborhood. Ramfield Road specifically is a narrow road that has farm equipment that regularly travels on it, school buses. It's one of those roads that you have to almost come to the side to let another car pass. Having this much... This level of increase in traffic will be detrimental to all of the people who live in this area. This is a lower-density neighborhood. It's always been a lower-density neighborhood. People bought properties in this area because they wanted this kind of character for the neighborhood that they're living in. And I'm not against all growth, but I want responsible growth. This is going from rural farmland and residential estates to high-density in a place where the roads are already not adequate. There's already not adequate drainage. Everybody there is already on septic systems, and this completely changes the area. Additionally, this is in a zone that's an accident potential Zone 1 for the base, and I don't believe that this is a safe area to have more high-density housing in. This precedent would create a slippery slope. Approving this zoning doesn't just affect one track. We're going to have neighbors up and down Ramfield potentially looking at changing the zoning, which would greatly impact our neighborhood. And so, for those reasons, I ask that you oppose this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come and speak on any one of these items? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the consent public hearing and entertain a motion or further questions for staff.
I have a question on the Number 8. How large is that track total for this owner?
Good question. So, while I'm looking that up, the purpose of the replat is to split the large, and it's literally 4.98 acres in size. So, it is a non-conforming... To be FR, you have to be five acres, so it is a hair under in total. Splitting that in half would roughly give you two and some change on one side and two and some change on the other. There are two existing homes in which will remain, so no additional homes are going to be built. This is to facilitate small additions to those homes. And the rule today says, if you have two non-conforming homes, you can expand them per the UDC if they're non-conforming. This is to give the homeowner a path to make those improvements to their home. I don't think one house is considered high-density, but that is the only type of improvement that's going to occur. They will remain on septic as they're above half-acre in size on each, which is compliant with state law, but they are roughly 2.47 acres each.
And for APZ 1, for the zone that it's in, what would that allow?
That would, at best, on a good day, would only allow you one unit per acre. And then, you would have to subdivide, which means you have to bring in water. You have to bring in wastewater, because you might get into that small lot territory. Third, you would have to build a pretty long driveway that can withstand 70,000 pounds of imposed load from a fire truck to go all the way to the back of the lot. So, to add one house, you're tacking on hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And the commenter had mentioned residential estate zoning. Can you expand on what that is?
Sure.
What size lots that is?
Residential estate is exactly what the APZ mandates, and that's one unit per acre.
Okay. So, what that is zoned already is?
It can never go smaller than one unit an acre because of the military overlay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? No? All right. Entertain a motion for Items 2 through 9 with the exception of 7?
Make a motion that we approve Items 2 through 9 with the exception of Item Number 7 as presented by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to zoning, Item Number 7.
Alrighty, let's see.
Can we recess for dinner?
Okay, so for tonight's main event, we have Item Number 7, everyone's favorite. This is zoning case ZN 8725, officially Coastal Dunes LLC, located at 6753 State Highway 361. The request is from the RMAT Multifamily District to the RMAT Multifamily with a PUD, which stands for Plan Unit Development. So, here's a general location map to give you an idea of where the property is located. Again, on 361 Mustang Island, which is District 4. It is within the Padre Mustang Island Area Development Plan. Up to the north, you have a high-rise condo complex, Sandpiper. And to the south, you have a collection of single-family condos and single-family homes. Of the 157 notices that were sent out, we receive zero in favor and 91 opposed, which roughly calculates to just under 28%. And as you can see, what we broke down on the map is where it got interesting in the discussion with the appraisal district is how do you assign values to essentially postage-stamped lots? So, we were able to visit with them over the past month and essentially assign either a decimal value or roughly 1% of the total land value for each one of those lots. So, that's why you see these ratios and fractions on the screen. That's to say, for instance, Sandpiper received 105 notices. We received 71 in return. So, it gives you an idea of how many folks responded. Now, these are some refresher slides from the past meeting. I know it's been a little while since our last meeting, and that's to go over what the request is. So, the request is for a combination of 99 single-family homes, 32 townhouse lots, and that includes six common areas. That is where you'll have your amenities like barbecue pits, tennis courts, dune walkovers, all that good stuff, happens within those common areas. The request, when it comes to a PUD, while all of these are allowed in the current zoning district, where you have deviations, and that is where I have standards set in the Unified Development Code and I wish to deviate, is where the PUD really comes into play. Unified Development Code and I wish to deviate, is where the PUD really comes into play. So what you see on the right-hand side of the screen and what's broken down in your packet is to show where the developer is requesting those specific deviations. So for instance, in the townhouse section, where normally we would have 2,600 square-foot lots, they're requesting to go down to 1,700. Or where they have a minimum lot width of 26 feet, they are requesting 22 feet. Those, the only two deviation when it comes to townhouses, when it comes to single-family homes, those that you see highlighted in orange are the deviations versus the ones that remain in gray, which they did not request a deviation from what the UDC currently requires. Now, analysis and recommendation, as you're aware, the UDC establishes both for plan unit developments and any zoning case, a review criteria in which we determine whether or not a zoning case fits, should it even be worthy of being asked. In that case, the main things that we compare to is the city's comprehensive plan as a whole, the area development plan, which in this case is for Mustang and Padre Island, and any type of other utility maps, or if we see past zoning trends that are impactful. We have compared to future land use, area development plan, comprehensive plan, they check each one of those boxes. They are consistent with the adopted plans by the city. That being said, being a plan unit development, we run it through an additional review process through the technical review committee. The difference of a PUD, and I'm sure I'm just preaching to the choir, but the difference from the PUD between any other zoning case is that it is the only time in which a zoning case and a plat are married together, meaning the master site plan that is approved with your PUD must be exactly the same when you file your plat. It cannot deviate. Any deviations essentially forces you to restart the process all over again. So the plat that you will someday see in the future is going to mirror the approved master site plan that is filed with the PUD. So that being said, why I'm saying that is the technical review committee, which reviews every plat, as I read in earlier into the record, went ahead and did a review of the PUD, not only to call out any potential issues, but to let the developer know that you have to solve plating issues, things like stormwater quality management plans, which is, the question's about drainage, consistency with your urban transportation plan, roadway master plan, any roads that have to be constructed, is mentioned now. That way, we're addressing those concerns today rather than waiting until it gets to the plat phase. So that being said, the questions that, we've received numerous phone calls, emails, concerned citizens asking about the roadway, regardless of if this zoning case is passed or fails, that beach access road is required per the urban transportation plan, the roadway master plan that was adopted by council a number of months ago, in fact, almost a year ago now. Even if the developer chose to keep the zoning as it is today and not do a plan unit development, when they come into plat, they will still be required to build the beach access road. That is despite townhouses, high-rise, low-rise, it doesn't matter, that roadway is required. Just wanted to make sure that was clear to the commission in case there's questions about, well, if we deny the PUD, does that mean the road goes away? Or if we approve the PUD, does that mean that we get to manipulate the road? That roadway exists unless the developer comes back and asks again, because mind you, literally one year ago tonight, planning commission voted to keep the beach access road on the map. Unless planning commission entertained a future amendment in which the developer can come back and ask, hey, I'd like to bring it up again and take this road off the map officially, planning commission would have another opportunity to make that determination of whether or not, again, to keep that roadway on the map. But I wanted to say that there are two separate issues. They both come into play at zoning and plating, but regardless, whomever develops this property, even if the owner sold and it went to another developer, that roadway is still required per the plan today.
As it is zoned right now?
As it is zoned today.
That would still be.
If I want to build one single-family home, I have to plat the property, and when I plat the property, I have to build the road.
Okay. All right, great.
But that being said, again, as I mentioned, staff goes through the rubric of, within the UDC, of how we validate whether or not a zoning case meets the various metrics established by code. It does. We recommend approval of the rezoning.
Okay.
And if there are any questions, I'm sure there'll be questions, but happy to address them.
Yes. Any questions, commissioners?
I have a question. The 22-foot lot width.
Yes, sir.
Is that for the townhomes or any of the other ones?
Let's see, let's bring up the zoomed-in version, because I know it's, it's hard to read that text, so I wanted to make sure. Well, I had it up a little bit ago, but let's bring up the PUD, and we will go down to that specific table. Actually, it's better in the site plan. Okay, so you mentioned 22-foot lot. Those are just for the townhouse lots.
But that, that, if, if this PUD is approved as presented, does that 22-foot lot width rule over any other, any of the single-family home lots?
No, they are separately indicated areas. Let me pull up that color.
Well, I know it's the way they've got it drawn in this preliminary plat, but would they be allowed to build single-family homes on 22-foot wide lots?
No. Well, technically, every townhouse is permitted as a single-family home, so it's, it's not a clear-cut yes or no. You wouldn't build a traditional single-family home on a townhouse lot because you're going to have shared walls among, so you couldn't have individuals separately constructed single-family homes. You will have a shared building with multiple units with pie slices, essentially.
Right. But I'm, I'm concerned about, typically, we have a driveway depth, and, you know, we've seen some of these PUDs before where it's been dictated that the face of the garage door be recessed below the, the structure to be able to accommodate a minimum of 20 feet. And, you know, I drive the F-350 that's 22 feet long, which is longer than the driveway and longer than, and just as, as wide as the, as the width of the, the lot, right?
And that's an excellent question. So the UDC requires that I provide two parking spaces per unit, so either I have to make the building wider to accommodate parking under the structure, which will count the parking under the building and the one driveway space. Or to accommodate, I'll have to push the building back a little more.
No.
In order to go up. Now, most of these stilted developments, they're going to take advantage of the storage underneath and create a garage space, so you will have the ability, can't account for every bumper, but I would say the majority are going to be able to fit in that space since you're counting both under the building and the driveway, which still has to be 20 feet regardless.
But can you still fulfill the require, the landscape requirements if you have 100 percent driveway?
So you still have minimum open space requirements of 30 percent, even in the townhouse district, you are still required to plant the one tree. The question about 50 percent impervious coverage has come up, so we have provided alternate accommodations such as pavers, permeable surfaces, separations where you can use brick with Caliche in order to allow water to drain. Aside from that, we've had to roll back certain landscape requirements because of drought restrictions, so those are not currently in play for both commercial and residential development and haven't been in play for now a couple of years due to drought restriction.
I just don't know how you're going to squeeze all that in there, because if you're going to have two nine-foot parking spaces, right, that's 18 feet minimum. And then you, that leaves you with two feet on either side to be able to shove in a tree and some grass and, you know, I, I just, I, I've seen the, the permeable pavers and how you can plant grass in those and, and things like that, but it just seems incredibly tight. Do we have any other PUDs with 22-foot wide townhome lots?
Sure, several. There's several on White Cap, Granada, and Running Light, which have had the same narrow lots in the city. We've had several on Shelby, which is right near Delmar East Campus, which was a redevelopment project. And most recently, we've had plats come in, taking advantage of the new 3,000-square-foot law, but those will be on 18th and Morris and the, the heart of the west side to redevelop on top of an old-school site. So this type of new style of tinier homes is becoming more popular because it is more attainable to the public.
Yeah, and I, and I get that. I have concerns about it, though, in a, in a, something that's presumably going to be short-term rentals, because, you know, you very rarely have two cars.
And I'm glad you're touching on that. So several of the things that, as I mentioned, it went to the technical review committee. Comments are already coming in from fire about, do we paint certain curbs red to make sure that no one's parking on the street? Is the street going to be wide enough?
There's going to be no curb.
Exactly. These questions are already being asked, so regardless if the planning commission and council approves the zoning, they are still bound to follow fire code, points of access, depth, sidewalk coverage, all of those things still come into play. Unless you're specifically calling out a deviation, the UDC still applies. So a PUD, while it sounds like a get-out zoning jail-free card, all it says is if you don't call out exactly what you want to deviate from, and in this case, only two items in townhouses, everything else still applies. It does not give you carte blanche.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
And Andrew, you, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
You kind of already addressed it, but these, this chart that we're looking at with the PUD standards.
Yes, sir.
That Mr. Miller was referencing, so those are pretty much put into law. So like, it's very specific, you know, which lot and block this applies to. So they, they have to follow this.
It's, it's bound by the master site plan. The UDC establishes within Article Three only five things you can deviate from once you have a PUD approved. One is you can slightly, and we're talking inches, move a property line to accommodate things like staircases. Or you can only reduce the number of lots that you're building. You cannot increase. So it, it gives you, I would say PUD puts more hamstrings on you of what you can do than what base zoning does, which gives you far more width and berth. So PUDs, PUDs are not easy. They have far more restrictions, and like you just said, once you have this type of site plan approved, you are married to it. And it's very extremely hard to deviate without having to come back to this very body and to council all over again to even make small amendments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, Andrew. I don't have a concern with the PUD. I, I do have a concern with the beach access road for flooding purposes. As an insurance agent for 40 years specializing in property and casualty insurance, that's really an issue when it comes to flood insurance, because you not only put these homeowners at risk, you put the adjacent property owners at risk as well. So are you telling me that we cannot make a motion today to approve the PUD with the speculation or the requirement that the beach access road not be granted?
Excellent question. So just earlier in tonight's agenda, items 10 and 11, to approve the plat, which was item number 11, you had to approve number 10, which was the amendment to the roadway master plan. Similarly, you would have to have a future, item number 10, a future amendment to the roadway master plan to eliminate or alter the beach access road requirement that's, that's on the map today. So regardless if zoning is approved, disapproved, PUD happens, PUD does not happen, the roadway master plan requires that beach access road. So even if I build one single-family home tomorrow and I plat the property, I am still required to build that road. Now, I can say the developer has tried to initiate, at least with staff, a conver, start the conversation of coming back to planning commission and asking for that future amendment to remove the road. They are encountering some difficulties with the Army Corps of Engineers, with the General Land Office for the very things that you're bringing up. It has not been officially filed, so I, I can't go into too much detail because right now, it's just an ongoing conversation. But I can say that the developer has initiated, their engineer of record has initiated that conversation.
Okay. And from what I remember, when this originally came to us, it came to us without that road, correct?
Correct.
And it was us, this body, that almost imposed that he put that road there.
There was a request for an amendment roughly almost a year ago tonight. In fact, it might be exactly to the day, and the planning commission voted to keep it. Now, the conversation that I had with the developer is, just like zoning cases, you may ask for a zoning one year, get denied, new information comes about, you find out that next door was going to be dedicated for a park, so there will never be interaction with a next-door property. Similarly, you can bring new information back to the commission and say, we did XYZ studies, we've done environmental impact analysis, and it simply doesn't work. Will you hear this case again? And these are the XYZ reasons why we think you should reconsider. And that is perfectly within their rights to ask and is perfectly within your rights to look at it again.
My only fear is that, as a developer, having to wait another year, I mean, that puts everything on hold, whether it's this project or any other project, so.
So they won't have to wait, so zoning, a denial in zoning will sit them out officially for a year. An approval of zoning, that request to remove the beach access road can happen at any time. So we could have it in January, February, by the time this case reaches council, or if the developer says, hey, I'd like a little more time before we get to council to address the roadway issue, and that's perfectly within their purview to do.
Okay. And just a reminder that regardless of what our decision is, it still goes to council for a final decision.
Correct. That's not to say that your recommendation isn't extremely important, but yes, it is a recommendation that is forwarded to city council for a final decision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just one question. If the developer doesn't decide to develop the property and it gets approved, the rezoning gets approved, does it go back to the original zoning?
It is only valid, so let's say between now and council, property is sold, case just dissolves. If it's post-council and it's approved, if the PUD is not initiated within six months or by a plat, by some other means, getting infrastructure built, the plat, the PUD dissolves.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can we ask questions?
Yes, I'm coming there. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for item number seven. Anyone who would like to come and speak, please state your name and city you live in. And please do remember that we, as board, are not to answer any questions that you might ask. That is for Development Services to address for you. All right.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing us tonight. My name is Melissa Hackmaster. I'm a member of Lost Colony Villas. We are the neighborhood to the south of this property we're talking about tonight. We're here to divorce our opposition to the current rezoning PUD being proposed. We'll address the four key issues that Mr. Demus has let us know that the review body considers in determining whether to approve or deny this zoning amendment. We'll also outline the current proposal negatively affects Lost Colony Villas directly and also Mustang Island as a whole. So first of all, the first item, the zoning map amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan. I've read that full comprehensive plan. Environmental concerns are the number-one important issue for community members. The island, they list a vision of beautiful and safe beaches and views as important to preserve. They also stress the importance of maintaining a safe and family-friendly environment, the blending of residential and resort communities, and the concern regarding traffic flow that we're talking about. This raises our concern of the density of this proposal. While overall, the density of the property may not be considered high, the cluster density along the border between our two neighborhoods allows for twice the density of Lost Colony Villas. The higher density of the proposed community leads to more people, more traffic on our beaches, less safety due to the higher volume, a loss of open spaces and views, and a lack of blending between our communities. This is not in compliance with many key issues in the comprehensive plan, and we oppose the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jay Dyer, and I'm a property owner and permanent resident in Lost Colony Villas. And I'd like to address the recommendation under your consideration that this amendment is compatible with the present zoning and conforming uses of nearby property and to the character of the surrounding area. To begin with, I suggest to you that, that at least this statement or recommendation is misleading to the committee, and at most, it's outright deception. Many of us have chosen to live on the Corpus Christi side of Mustang Island for very specific reasons. The more residential environment versus packed-in rentals, the larger lots, the expansive views and open spaces, the ponds and marshlands that bring wildlife to this end of the island for refuge, the calmer beaches with less traffic, to name a few. This proposed resort-style community is not in line with these fundamentals, and there is certainly not an adequate plan to blend our community with the high-density wall of homes proposed to be as close as five feet from our northern border. We have 13 units and one pool area along this border, which averages about 60-foot, 60-foot per lot compared to the 28 units, which is more than double our density, that will border us on this proposal. 35-foot. 35 foot for single homes and 22 foot for townhomes. To reiterate, we have 65 foot lots, and they're proposing 35 and 22 foot lots. This is high density and absolutely does not conform to the character of what is currently the surrounding area, nor does it conform, as Melissa mentioned, to the Padre Island, Mustang area development plan. As I mentioned, this is more than twice the density, and it's quite a significant disparity from what our community already, how it stands. The standard lot size of 50 foot for single family and 26 foot for townhomes should be maintained. Our neighbor to the south, Beach View, I'd like to point out the name again, Beach View, has 70 foot lots along our southern border, which does align with the character of the surrounding area. Also, there is no noted proposal to provide for a buffer zone or transition space between these very different neighborhoods. The required 5-foot backyards will certainly not adequately provide for this. Lost Colony Villas provides at least 17-foot buffers to the corner of our closest unit as we're angled towards the water, and the rest provide 22-foot buffers between the borderline of our property. We're not aware of another such community as this one being proposed on the Corpus Christi side of Mustang Island, and we oppose this amendment as it clearly does not conform to the character of the surrounding area. It does not provide an adequate buffer zone between the residential and resort-style communities, and it is clearly not in agreement with your current Padre Mustang Island area development plan, your stated vision of how development should take place on our island. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come and speak?
My name is Dan Tolleson. I'm a resident of the subdivision that we're talking about today, Lost Colony Villas, which was established over 40 years ago, and many of us has owned, we've owned homes there for several years. We've observed the beauty of this property to the north of us and appreciate and truly think it's special. The wetlands and marshlands provide a respite for various types of waterfowl, spoonbills, heron, gray eaglets, sandhill cranes, Canadian geese, redtail, red-shouldered hawks, in addition to deer, coyotes, et cetera. Annually thousands of red-headed ducks frequent the wetland in the fall and then the winter. While we do understand the right of the owner to develop this land, and we do wish them well, but we are very much concerned about the environmental, the environmental impact that this development will have. Especially as Port Aransas has allowed development of these types, it is even more important for these waterfowl sanctuaries to be preserved on around the island in order for these species to have a place to feed, rest, reproduce, and be safe. The more units placed on this property, the higher the density of people and increased likelihood that these animals will no longer feel that they're in a safe environment. Also, the ponds and the marshland are designated as waters, wetlands of the United States, which means they are important to the environment to protect and improve water quality for the surrounding area. If the lands to be disturbed as little as possible in development, we'll surely need to take this into consideration and obtain the required permits if any changes are made. We oppose this amendment as the property is not suitable for the PUD development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Cindy Constanzo, and I'm an owner of number 24 in Lost Colony Villas. I disagree with the statement in the amendment that says the zoning map amendment does not have a negative impact upon the surrounding neighborhood. This amendment will surely negatively impact our neighborhood. The current proposal of high-density homes along our northern border will make a huge change to our current environment. Property values will be affected negatively due to the following items listed below. Desirability of our neighborhood will go down, reducing our property values and making our homes more difficult to sell if the need arises. Who would want to be next to a wall of homes directly off of our decks, which are largely extensions to the living areas of our homes? Our Mustang Island outdoor living is a way of life, and now instead of looking at beautiful dunes and wildlife, we will be met with an almost solid obstructing wall of homes with only 10 feet between homes, five feet backyards, and homes packed onto 35-foot lots. Lost Colony Villas will not be a desirable area to purchase in. Privacy will be hugely impacted. The short buffer between our neighborhoods ensure we will be looking directly into the windows of our neighbors, and they will be looking at us. The high density of homes will mean the more neighbors we have and the increased lack of privacy. Our once relaxing environment will now be reduced to that of living in a fishbowl. Draining is a concern. We do have significant rainfalls on Mustang Island, and we already experienced significant pooling of waters on our property. Beach View had to implement a costly drainage system during the development of their community as Lost Colony Villas were being flooded due to the new homes built. The effect of the surrounding environment is again a concern for reasons previously discussed. The loss of the wildlife and beauty of the land will have a huge impact. This resort community will increase the population of the beach in front of Lost Colony Villas. The larger resort will add increase to beach traffic, which affects safety, enjoyment, and again, desirability of our community. Our beach is prone to high tides and shallow beaches, and the increased numbers will be harder to accommodate. There are times when our beach literally disappears. The addition of the beach road access is very concerning. Our dunes are already fragile due to the short nature of them between Sandpiper and our sister neighborhood, Lost Colony Council. They are prone to erosion, and LSC has already had to take extreme measures to maintain the dunes during recent storms. It makes no sense to cut into the short areas of dunes when there are other options on the island that are not so fragile and would not jeopardize people's homes. Also, directing cars of beachgoers onto our already high-trafficked, often shallow beach is not necessary and would lead to new problems. We have beach access road two already close to us to our south, and there is a new beach road that is being put in not far to our northern side. These reasons outline why we're opposing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Ted Constanzo. I'm the LCV board president for our HOA, and we are on the southern border of the development. And I want to start by thanking the board for rescheduling and rezoning this council meeting to review, I know you're recently approved, but granting us an opportunity to present our views and opposition to this rezoning. Please let me be clear. We are not opposed to development of the property to our north, and we're not opposed to the developer coastal dunes themselves. What we're opposed to is the current form of this development and the negative impact that it would make if this rezoning standards are approved and the success of this, excuse me, approved and these, this rezoning is implemented. We all would like to be good neighbors and support the growth of this area and the success of coastal dunes and their plans to develop that property, but we want it done in a responsible way. We consider it irresponsible to put in 22-foot, and I share Mr. Miller and I share Mr. Hendrick's concerns regarding packing these homes in right along our north fence line as they have with 22 and 30-foot lots, just not responsible. This will allow for 10-foot apart as well as 5-foot deep, and know this, that it's going to, in turn, we've got 13 units, they're going to put 28 units along that fence line as it is proposed. We've got 17-foot to 22-foot, they're going to have them 5-foot. You know, all those offset that aspect, it's not conformed to our standards that we have currently in place, nor does it make for good neighbors. The increase in the number of houses means an increase in beach population. Our beaches are narrow enough as it is with the crease in the population, and we already have as it is, you know, we moved out there because we want to get away from Port Aransas. We want open beaches. This will take that all away. And I fear the impact of this high-density development would totally disrupt the fragile environment and ecosystem that has been presented, and the beauty of that property will be destroyed. And finally, we all oppose the road, which Mr. Cantu had mentioned, and I think, I think it is wise to remove that road for all the reasons that he stated, but it's true. It's going to not just destroy that fragile dune that protects us, but it's going to allow for floodwaters and storm surge. We oppose this because we are fearful that proving this rezoning will forever change for the worse our beaches, communities, and the way of life that we have enjoyed for 40 years. Thank you for taking into consideration our concerns, and we'd appreciate it if you would vote no for this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had some photos and a video. Good evening. My name is Dana Summers. My husband Bill and I have owned home number 33 in the Lost Colony Villa subdivision for seven years. My husband and I are opposed to granting the PUD variance for a number of reasons, many of which have been well detailed by our neighbors this evening. Tonight, I will speak with regard to the wetlands on the property which serve as a sanctuary for an abundant and varied number of waterfowl that we have had the pleasure of observing over the years. As the photos and videos show, the ponds are currently teeming with ducks. The part that can't be seen from the photos are the thousands, yes, I said thousands, of ducks that are tucked into the vegetation around the pond. I have spot counted these ducks for years. They go in large groups and feed in the bay before sunrise. Then around sunrise, you can hear the duck hunters start shooting, and these clever ducks hightail it back en masse to the safety and peace of our ponds. I have also personally observed Canadian geese using our ponds in a similar fashion. I have observed an abundant variety of birds using these wetlands inner along the banks of the ponds. I've seen whitetail kites and blue buntings, both of which I believe are quite rare. I have contacted Dr. David Newstead regarding this property development. He is the director of the Coastal Bird Program with the Nuasis Coastal Band Bays and Nestuaries Initiative. He is familiar with this property and told me that this wetland area does indeed serve as a waterfowl sanctuary. In addition, he explained waterfowl need a place of respite daily in order to maintain body condition and to be fit enough to survive in high enough quantities and conditioned to return to breeding grounds next spring. This is the brood stock of next year's waterfowl season. Dr. Newstead said most waterfowl hunters know this. If the PUD variance is granted, then extra homes and development will be placed on this environment, environmentally rich and significant yet fragile land. Frankly, I'm astounded that the planning and zoning committee are considering granting this PUD, which will result in more development on this property and lessening the current restrictions to do so. If anything, I would think they would be protecting this valuable wildlife resource by placing more restrictions on this developer, not less. This retired elementary school teacher is reminded of the parable from the children's tale, Jack and the Beanstalk, "Don't kill the goose that lays the golden eggs." This island property is a very special place and home to a great deal of natural beauty. Adding a density of homes to this property could indeed increase tax revenues for the city and perhaps profits for the developers. But at what cost? From all walks of life, the reason these homes are destroyed, we must be good stewards of this gift.
Thank you.
My name is William Summers, and I'm going to follow my wife like every good husband ought to do. I'm going to be very, very brief. The proposed plan that we have seen that the developer is asking for is going to increase the density of rooftops, infrastructure, and change the sheet water flow of that property to the adjacent properties, which is ours, and the two high-rise condominiums. The Texas Water Code is very, very clear that when someone changes the sheet flow of water by concentrating or directing it in any way, shape, or form, they become strictly liable for any damage caused to any adjacent landowners. And I, as an attorney, deal with this on a daily basis, and I will be suing the owner if in fact there is a dramatic change for the sheet flow that affects our properties.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come and speak?
Hi, thank you all for listening to us tonight. My name's Shannon Dyer. I think y'all were given these couple of printout photos. I'm a permanent resident of Lost Colony Villas, and first I wanted to say that I'm in 100% agreement with what all my neighbors have said tonight. I wanted to walk you through these photos because I thought it might give you a better idea of our property versus the little, you know, map we've been looking at. The aerial map is a small portion of Mustang Island. The red dotted line is the city limits between Port Aransas and Corpus Christi. As you can see on the Port Aransas end of the island, the developments are bigger, smaller lots, more dense, and the end with Corpus Christi, smaller developments and much larger lots. And all of the condos on this end, condos and home developments, have all been developed in a way that all homes and condos are situated for everybody to enjoy all their natural surroundings. The photo is probably a few years old, and on the insert of one of the very densely developments, there are tons more homes in there now. This is not even a fraction what is actually in there now. The diamond-shaped structure is La Mirage condominiums. And this other photo is La Mirage with now their big wall of homes behind them. They now have a lack of privacy, and the views that these condo owners once enjoyed is now gone. And I'd like to, for you to ask yourselves if these condos rent as well as they used to? Do you think their resale values have been infected? This property suffers on the account of the way the neighboring property was developed. Back to the first photo, the other insert highlighted area is the area that we are talking about tonight. The community, this is Lost Colony Villas, and this is the Sandpiper condominiums. The, if the, sorry, I lost my place. If the zoning change is approved, we expect that the same high-density neighborhood will be put in the small property in between, which you can see, a lot of it is the ponds and the wetlands. We assume that this will negatively affect our neighbors, affect our neighborhood and limit our privacy and our natural surroundings, and it will affect our rental and sellable values. It does not comply with the current Mustang Island development plan, and so I hope you oppose this change. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Crawford. I'm a resident full-time in Port Aransas. I'm here representing District Four today. I'm the president of CCMS LLC, with a management agent for both the Sandpiper and the Seagull condominiums. Been managing those places, one over 30 years, one over 14 years. I'm speaking on behalf of the hundred of owners who live with the daily realities of the dune systems, storm impacts, and coastal access. We're here today to respectfully request that the proposed beach access road shown on the coastal dunes PUD not be approved in its current location, as it sounds like there's going to be another process down the road that'll have to take place to have that happen, but just would like to read this to you guys if I can. I want to begin by acknowledging what is clearly stated in the zoning staff report under the road master plan. It identifies that a reported proposed public access road, service area 18 PA, public access as proposed. This designation is why the developer has been required to show the road on the plat, even though the developer themselves has concerns about it. However, while there may appear to be a future conceptual alignment in the road master plan, it is a physical placement as drawn on the PUD, creates a direct and significant impact of the two long-established coastal resorts immediately east of the State Highway 361. The road as aligned in the PUD master plan would run immediately between the proposed development and the Sandpiper, directly adjacent to our dune fields, walkovers, parking areas, and residential structures. For our community, this creates major safety concerns, increased traffic, pedestrian conflict, and emergency access complications. Environmental risk, the corridor crosses sensitive dunes, erosion setback areas, wetlands, and documented coastal flood zones. Long-term maintenance burdens, the city would inherit a roadway located in one of the most dynamic and vulnerable dune systems on Mustang Island. And also, just to highlight that one important about tonight's agenda, the item of 2519 - nineteen thirteen, the Commission had amended the roadway master plan to remove the plan material for the Amanda Lane, because it's no longer appropriate in this map location. This demonstrates two things. The roadway master plan can and should be amended when circumstances warrant, and two, you have the authority to determine whether a proposed road alignment is compatible with existing development and natural systems. In the case of this proposed beach access road, we respectfully submit that the alignment shown in the PUD is not compatible with the Sandpiper, Seagull, or the dune and wetland system in the area. We fully support responsible development on Mustang Island. We recognize the city's interest in maintaining public access, but we ask the Commission to take the approach that we've taken, or we took with Amanda Lane. Evaluate whether the proposed road at this location is appropriate. Our request is simple. Please consider removing the beach access road alignment from the PUD approval and recommend the city to evaluate locations, State Highway three sixty-one better support, safety, and environmental protection. Thank you for your time and service to the city. Thank you all, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Casey Patterson in District Four, Seagull, Sandpiper condominiums. I'm here regarding zoning case ZN eight seven, eight seven two five. Although this item is presented as a zoning change, the materials, including the conceptual plan and staff report, clearly include a vehicular beach access road through the active dune system. Because this road is embedded in the PUD layout and shown in the master transportation plan, I understand this Commission at some point does have the authority to remove it, and I respectfully ask that you do so. My comments reflect not only my own concerns, but those of many property owners who have submitted their written opposition. You listed a number of them before, citing same environmental, safety, and policy inconsistencies that I hope to outline. While the staff report provided states that the proposal is consistent with Plan CC, both the plan itself and an independent environmental assessment prepared by the SWCA Environmental Consultants, shown that it is not. SWCA is a nationally recognized environmental firm whose work is relied upon by state and federal agencies. Their findings carry professional credibility, and I'm happy to share this report with anybody that asks for it. This report was ordered and obtained by neighboring communities. First, the requirement for the inclusion of the road in this proposal directly conflicts with Plan CC's natural systems policies. Plan CC states that natural barrier beach environments are to be protected and support continued enforcement and regulations that protect barrier beaches. Also, Plan CC instructs decision-makers to promote implementation of regulations that protect barrier beaches and dunes and to lessen the erosional impact of tidal surges. The proposed road requires removing roughly one acre of active dunes and creating man-made breach in the storm surge barrier and weakening protection for adjacent properties. Thank you for calling that out earlier. SWCA confirms that this dune removal would create a hole in the natural barrier, reduce erosion protection, increase storm surge risk, and negatively impact the habitat for federally protected species. A project that increases erosional and storm surge vulnerability cannot be considered consistent with Plan CC's mandate to protect the dunes. Second, Plan CC requires protecting wildlife and habitat networks. SWCA report documents that there's moderate sea turtle nesting potential, low to moderate east black rail occurrence, and critical habitat for piping clover and roof of red knot. Disturbing these areas, depending on various factors, could constitute a prohibited take under federal law. Again, this is inconsistent with Plan CC's natural systems element. Third, Plan CC supports beach access, but not when it comes to expensive dune systems and not where existing access points already serve that area. An existing beach access road exists two miles to the south, and already approved beach access road is scheduled to be constructed seven tenths of a mile to the north. A new vehicular breach is unnecessary. Given the clear conflicts between the dune breach and environmental protection mandates in Plan CC, this requirement to protect the dunes from erosional and storm surge impacts, and given SWCA's independent findings, I respectfully ask that the Planning Commission find a way to remove the proposed beach access road from the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time for listening to us. My name is Dennis Karbach, and I'm the owner of Unit four oh nine at the Sandpiper. And I'm here to voice my opposition to the coastal dunes LLC PUD as submitted. Many of the issues have been voiced already, and I totally agree with them. My major concern is this beach access road, one D, that abuts the Sandpiper property and is fewer than seventy-five feet from our building. And it's a twelve-story building, as you know, that was built in nineteen eighty-five. Cutting this access road through the dunes creates environmental and safety concerns for our building. As you know, the sand dunes are a significant barrier between the ocean and our building, and a cut through compromises that barrier, and flooding of our building is a greater risk during tropical storms or hurricanes. As already stated, the city of Corpus Christi has approved a beach access road at mile marker seventy-one, and now we're asking for another one at mile marker seventy-seven, which is on this property that you're considering right now. It seemed to me that there may not be a need to have another beach access road in the city of Corpus Christi, six tenths of a mile from the last one. Therefore, I humbly ask that the Planning Commission consider revisiting the beach access road at marker seventy-seven, since there's already one at seventy-seven. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Mitch Bowles. I own Unit eleven oh eight at the Sandpiper. And I drove down from Fort Worth yesterday to learn, but it's a much bigger concern than I originally realized, and I just want to second everything that all these people have said. The density, the impact on the wildlife is my main concern. The wetlands there, if we have a road right there where, when we have high tides, the tides come right up to the dunes, if we have any kind of a storm surge, it's going to destroy the wetlands up there. So I have a major concern with that. That's really all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Mansudo. I'm an owner in Unit twelve oh nine at the Sandpiper. And I didn't want to read from a script, so I could speak more slowly. Number one, this is the first of these I've ever attended, and it is so professional. I congratulate you all, your intent, your interest. I'm not going to come as a spectator again, but I am really impressed with what you've I'd like to distill it down that we're talking about somebody wants to make money. I can't believe that we're servicing our community by allowing a builder to get variance. There's already an established PUD that says the landowner can develop it in a way consistent with the PUD, and the developer knows that. So when this desire to alter that comes up, it's just about making money at the cost of what you've heard tonight. So I support a no vote, and I just wanted to thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Rob Watson. I'm the Director of Camps and Conferences for the Episcopal Diocese of West Texas. We own and operate Mustang Island Conference Center, which is just south of the proposed development, and we also own one of the properties in the Lost Colony subdivision. And I am here to speak in opposition to the change in the zoning. At our conference center, we operate family camp during the entire summer months. We invite families from all over the state, all over the country, to come and learn about what a wonderful, prestigious, pristine land and environment so that they can know that they are loved and cherished members of a community and loved by God. We use this environment in its pristine condition so that people can know and love what it means to take care and respect the land around them and the people that they interact with. This change in zoning creates a mass density, as all of our neighbors have pointed out, that brings more and more people into this environment that is unsafe and overcrowded, and it loses all of the benefits that everyone has already described in this condition. So I speak in opposition, just as some of Commissioner Milner and the staff person pointed out earlier, a density of this nature of these small tiny homes is completely consistent with a development or a redevelopment on the island. But Mustang Island itself is only eighteen miles long. It's a beach environment that we want to celebrate and appreciate for all the wonderful things that it has. The more that we develop it, the more the people that we bring, the more unsafe and less pristine that happens. The road with all the new traffic, all of our programming takes place on the beach. We send people out all day long to have surf lessons, to have scavenger hunts, to all these wonderful kind of things on the beach, and that we constantly fight the traffic that goes up and down the road. A new road, a new road that's just seven tenths from a new road that's going in is going to absolutely change that traffic pattern and make it more dangerous to cross the road consistently. Our families and their children already have to take incredible concern just from getting from our property onto the beach where they can enjoy it. So for all those reasons, I please ask you to reconsider, and we speak in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Wolf. I'm in the Beachview Estates subdivision between the Episcopal Retreat and Lost Colony. I have a problem with the road like everybody else. I also have a problem with the way the thing is laid out and the density. I understand there's a master plan for the island that basically has an access road easement every mile. So eventually, there could be twenty access roads on Mustang Island. I don't think we need another one right there. Just a year ago, the city and the county approved putting one, as they said, at mile marker seventy-seven, which is point seven miles or point six miles north of where this one would be. Port A just opened a brand-new one, or about to open it, about two and a half, three miles north of that. So I understand we need more roads for more EMX access, but we've already got two brand-new ones. I don't see why another one, point six miles from this other one that's already been approved, is needed. I understand it's because that easement's there. When they come to you and say, "We want to develop this," you say, "Well, there's a road easement here. You have to do it." My understanding is the developer doesn't want to do it. None of the neighbors want to do it. I just heard that you have a way to take that away. I would ask that you please do that. I also don't understand, looking at this thing, when you have established Lost Colony neighborhood here on the south and the Sandpiper up against the dunes with a whole bunch of vacant area up front, why would you lay out a development like this, cramming all of the condos right up against the property line of these existing homeowners that are there, when you could just flip it and put all the density on the north property where nothing is at? So that, to me, doesn't make sense if it has to do with wetlands and moving ponds. I know that can be worked around, because they just bulldozed the entire parcel between me and the Episcopal Retreat, fifteen acres, and filled in seven wetlands, and then got punished and had to build a dune, but those wetlands are gone now, just south of us, which I'm not happy about. I'm also concerned with this statement that apparently if you approve this zoning, this plat is married to this zoning and can never change. I thought I heard that. And that concerns me, because I feel that when this goes to council or further steps, that they're going to look at that and say, "Put the density on the other side, take the road away. We don't need it. We're just building a new one, point six miles north." What happens if they change it? If you approve it and it's tied to this, can the council change it? So that's a, can I ask that question? What happens if the city council comes back and says to change this?
At this time, we're just in public comment to address-
But you said I could ask questions to them.
At their time.
Oh, okay.
At your time with his time, you know? You can always, you're more than welcome to come.
Okay, okay. Well, I would like to know, I'm concerned about that if you take this action today, that plat is cast in stone and can't be changed, even if the city council wants to do something different. So I'd like to know the answer to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Anne Hagelstein, and I have two condos at the Sandpiper. And the road that they are desiring to put in, there are several things that I don't think are being addressed, and that has to do with the Highway three sixty-one and the traffic when there. Several years ago, we were at the Sandfest. There were three hundred thousand people that went to the Sandfest over that three or four-day period. Traffic was constant. You can't get on and off of three sixty-one when they have events that are as large as that. And we would just wait, since we didn't have to leave. We would just wait until the traffic died down so we could get out of the Sandpiper. If that road is to go in, and it'll go in next to the Sandpiper, it will take away our beaches. Lost Colony will lose theirs, we'll lose ours, because the width of the beach is so narrow. Now, we were talking earlier before the meeting, and they put up a plat of the land, and there is, when the tents are set up, the canopies in front of the Sandpiper and the Seagull, there's nineteen feet between that and the bridge that takes us over the sand dunes. And, you know, that's not two lanes of traffic. And so we have all of these children that come to stay in these condos, you know, to have a good time, and they have to contend just with walking across where that traffic goes through that goes through too fast already, because the speed limit is not patrolled at all. And so if that road was there, they would go out this way. They would take away Lost Colony's beach access. They would take away Sandpiper and Seagull's access because of all the traffic that would be on here. We already have too much traffic. And so I hope you'll take this into consideration, that, you know, it takes away from our beach. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Connie Baines. I own Unit four oh three at Sandpiper, and I just completely agree with everything. And when I first came here, my main objection was the road and what it would do with the water surge and coming in. But after listening to everything else that's been said, I am very concerned. I'm not opposed to somebody building there. I understand that, but, boy, at what loss. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote against this. I'm opposed to it.
Good evening. My name is Rick Morrow. I'm an owner at the Seagull condominiums, which are just north of the Sandpiper. I'm a geologist, and I've studied beaches from New Jersey down the Florida and the Gulf Coast for forty-two years. What protects the area behind the beach is the dune. The beachfront dune is the most important protection. And what it protects us from is major storms. And, you know, just in nineteen seventy, Celia had an eight-foot, seven-point-nine-foot surge on Mustang Island. Harvey brought a twelve-foot surge at the Aransas Wildlife Refuge. When we poke holes in the, when we poke a hole in the dune, what we do is we increase more and more ability for that water to come through and destroy everything behind there, because it won't be a gentle flood from the back bay. It'll be a big rush of water coming through. Even a road that's coming over the top of the dune will have areas on each side that will wash away instantaneously in a major storm. I agree with one here from Lost Colony for their reasons to want it, but the road, what was said was, if one house gets built, that road will get built, which will put a major- major another gap. And as Mr. Cantu said, from an insurance perspective, they realize that that's what they've got to pay and it's going to make it unlivable there. It'll also destroy the wetlands if it comes through besides the traffic that's be associated with that road in terms of disturbing the wildlife. I just asked in on behalf of people at the Seagull that we that you vote against the road and this this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come and speak?
I'm Cheryl Wallach, owner at Sandpiper. Keep our beaches thriving. Dunes are one of the most recognizable features of the Gulf Coast. The sight of these sandy mounds and their plethora of native grasses and wildlife instantly evoke a sense of place and a feeling of peace. The dunes are a link to a natural paradise. Aside from their beauty and significance to the observer, sand dunes are also critical to the ecology. The dunes provide natural infrastructure to protect the island from geo hazards, including extreme tidal changes, erosion and storm surge. Dunes are protected under local and state laws and violations may result in fines and penalties under the Dune Protection Act. I found this on the Port Aransas Chamber of Commerce website. And we've heard reasons to not approve this development and this roadway because of erosion, insurance concerns, property valuation, and loss of wildlife habitat. Why would a Chamber of Commerce who is responsible for development and bringing in tourism dollars or business dollars be wanting to protect the dunes? As more and more of our nation is getting paved over, our Gulf Coast and Mustang Island is one of the few natural places we have left and ecotourism is becoming such a huge thing. You guys know the importance of economic dollar with sports fishermen. Port Aransas was proudly named the first bird city in the nation. All of these are important to our development, our economic dollars that are coming in. I implore y'all, please reconsider your roadway master plan and reconsider this development. This investor purchased on the gamble that this would be rezoned. I purchased with zoning in place that these wetlands on surrounding properties are protected and zoned this other way. If we build over like Galveston or Miami, if we have neighbors that are less than a truck length away from us, why would people want to come here? Just to be sitting five feet from our neighboring, what short-term rentals, permanent residents, why wouldn't we just go to Miami or Galveston? We need to keep our character here in the in the coastal bend. Keep us unique. Keep us a reason for people to visit. Please reconsider your previous decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Do we have the developer here? Maybe.
Jeff Hudson with Coastal Dunes. I am developer. Again, appreciate your time and we'll rehash the history. I know everybody's familiar faces from a year ago and six months ago and previous conversations. I guess first and foremost, we are against that access road. We spent quite a bit of money. Our presentation last time had the similar concerns that the group behind me has brought forth today. You know, but like Commissioner Cantu said, it's, you know, another year, you know, we presented this a year ago, we tasked our engineer six months prior to that to, you know, put a plan together, you know, get the UTP amended, the roadway master plan changed. We were shot down conventionally, seven, nothing at that meeting for the same reasons that, you know, were presented tonight. You know, our goal is to, you know, move forward with the PUD, move forward with, you know, what we're required to do. And if that's what it is, it is what it is. We don't want it. It does go through the wetlands that we've already studied. People, I know SWCA has done similar studies. We have perennial environmental have done a, you know, pretty extensive study on the wetlands. We did get the cores jurisdictional determination, you know, several months back. And we do have wetlands. We are honoring it. We we didn't oppose the jurisdictional determination in any way. I'm not coaching on it. We're actually saving more than this what's required, you know, because there are certain areas that are outside that JD that we can't access. So it's just, you know, to us, that was, you know, key in not trying to put something on every inch. We do have the 300-foot vegetation line, so we've got a lot of land that we purchased that, you know, we're protecting, that we're not touching, you know, but the area that we can develop, you know, we're putting a mix of properties on there, you know, ranging in 30. I mean, 22 feet had to be asked because there are wedge-shaped lots in the corners of cul-de-sacs. So it's still a 30-foot lot, but the frontage is 22 feet. So some of the 22-feet lots are probably, you know, probably some of the larger, smaller lots that we have. I want to say on that that plan, it's the green lots, it's lots nine or 10, then maybe one of the ones up in the cul-de-sac lot two that back up the pond. I mean, that lot is probably 7,000, 8,000 square feet, even though it's technically a 30-foot lot and it can be 1,700. It's good sized. Speaking of some of the comments that we had before, we can't flip the land because the whole north side is that wetland, it is the area that we got the jurisdictional determination on. It would be nice to flip the higher density to the vacant side or the high-rise condo side, but but we can't, you know, that we have a tight area to get from 361 to the for the you can kind of look at as a panhandle. We got the panhandle to get behind the pond and then, you know, the bulk of Oklahoma to okay, see y'all later. To get to that back area. So we do have a confined area that we have lots that back up to the Lost Colony side as well as, you know, the area that we had to, you know, set back from the, you know, wetlands, the pond. We view that as a huge asset to the site. It's one of the reasons we purchased it, one of the reasons that we, you know, looked at it because we, you know, we feel there's only a certain set of people that want one of our 17 beachfront lots. That's a different demographic, a different set of, you know, check writing ability than someone that can purchase, you know, the other three size lots. So we do have a lot of interest early on of people that want to, you know, being closer to the pond, to, you know, the water fowl, the water, you know, the sunset side instead of, you know, the beach side. So.
Okay.
I can answer any questions you might have or any, I would have, you know, proposed that we approve this tonight, the zoning, you know, because I Andrew, I don't know what the exact is, but it's currently zoned without the PUD, you know, without having to, you know, come rezone it anywhere from 20 to 30 lots per acre, which is that correct? On that, I think you mentioned something, if you wanted one of the zoning, we don't have any desire to put 500 or 600 units on here.
Correct. So under if single-family homes were to be built, that would be at a maximum density of 18 units per acre, which would equal 614 maximum dwelling units.
So that's not something that we want to.
The PUD is proposing 131, which is 21% of the maximum allowance.
Think all said and done, just because we're probably going to wind up honoring the JD, those lots that kind of swing around the north side of the pond, we most likely can't get to. You know, we'd have to, you know, encroach or go back to the core and ask for permission to get a little bit of land. So it's probably going to be 127, 126, all said and done. The we won't be able to get to some of those on that north side, those last four lots that are on that north side. I don't know if you got the sketch back up, but, you know, that's the PUD has the 131, but we'll be a few less than that.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Is the installation of the access road dictating any of your request for this PUD?
No, our density wouldn't change other than the financial obligation to get it built. And it that was our impetus in getting rid of it was it's not needed. We don't want it. We don't want to drive more people to the beach. And at the same time, we also don't, I think Mako, you know, the bids on Mako's piece on that whatever 21B was anywhere from 1.7 to 3.5 million dollars. So, you know, that's certainly not something that we want to absorb. And that's certain, you know, some of those conversations we're having with the city on if we don't need it but have to build it, are y'all going to contribute to it? So we've got some of those questions. That's some of the early planning meeting that we were trying to get with the city. But I think, you know, we've got that meeting not set up yet, but fees have been paid and we're just waiting on a slot to get to fill in there. So getting back to your question, our land plan doesn't change. We clean it up a little bit, you know, have one less entry to build, one less, you know, gates, we are going to be a gated community, one less operational gate that has to be constructed, you know, for our in and out. But, you know, fire department, we're underneath the threshold for their requirement because we are gated, because we have a wider entry of 361, we are, we only need one coming and one going and that satisfies that because we're less than the 149, 150 somewhere, whatever threshold was, we're well below that. So we don't need it, we don't want it. But in order to move forward, you know, kind of sequentially, so I can task my engineer with, you know, getting things moving and getting to the next, planning the next council, you know, I would love to have the PUD, you know, approve tonight in its current form and then have those discussions because like you said, it's a year, but, you know, we may get to the council and they say, you know, no, we spent quite a bit of money with Paige Dawson to do this study that says we need an access every mile, that whole island. I don't know those answer those questions. I don't think y'all or us can speak for the council at this time of what their decision's going to be, but to have, you know, to approve the zoning, you know, and move forward with possibly getting rid of it and then either coming back to you with the, you know.
Well, approving the zoning would also be something that everybody here is coming in with their concerns, which was the, you know, the vehicle beach access, the damage to the dunes where that'll that's a natural protector from flooding or water surge. And I think the people coming in here speaking on these concerns is something that I think we need to, the developer needs to take into consideration and see what it is that we can try to work out.
We have for a year and we have been told we have to build it. That's in, like Andrew said, if we come in with one lot or, you know, 131 lots, we have to build it. You know, we've we've tried to remove it, but, you know, if there's some assurances on, you know, getting our engineer to move forward, if we do remove it, it doesn't change, you know, the conceptual layout, it doesn't change the, you know, the blue, the red, the green, the yellows of what we do. It just removes that access road on the north side, you know, all the way through the beach. We kind of clean.
Is that is that something certain that you will take into consideration is removing that access road?
We don't want it. I would.
You don't want it.
I would love to have y'all by fiat, scratch through it tonight and put me on the January 6 council and let's 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 get going. But I don't, like I said, we've asked for a meeting, been asking for it for a while and I don't know if the staff has just been kind of waiting for this evening just to field all the questions, you know, from A to Z and be able to speak and tell it for it or or if it's just a, you know, getting it on their schedule, I don't know. But I would love for that to go away, but I also, you know, would love to, you know, keep inching forward with the development process during this time as well.
Right. Well, any other questions?
I had a question. So the pond that is showing that is in place right now, that will remain?
We're not touching it.
You're not touching?
We're not touching it.
So that was, you know, a big concern that a lot of people.
The jurisdictional termination has just a small, it's, you know, from our pond, it says it touches the Corpus Christi Bay. I'm not going to argue with the army, but, you know, our pond extends to the Sandpiper Seagull property, extends on down and keeps going down, the bar ditches and the frontage of those properties all the way. Somehow it's, they're determined it got to the base. So our wetlands determination, you know, I think we have like 2,000 or 3,000 square feet that we can touch. So we've picked a few areas of, you know, really our entry, we've got a couple of thousand square feet where we can touch without, you know, we have to demonstrate the army that they were going to take credit for this 1,200 square feet here, you know, but the four or five acre pond, we're not touching.
Okay. And then on your your plat map here, this area that's in front of the orange, I'll call it, that you said is just going to be untouched as well? That looks like that's your your dune area.
That's the three, yeah, we're the 300-foot vegetation dune line. Yeah, we're not touching that. So no, we're, those are the larger lots. So like I said, but if you've got that in front of you, y'all, the sketch, the colored sketch with the various colors on it, you know, if that beach access road does go away, just that horseshoe shape on the north side just gets extended closer to the property line and we flip those teal lots to blue lots and that's it. We switch those four for the dark blue floor and, you know, nothing goes away. But those four purple, magenta, if you're an engineer, they're on the north side of that lot, those in all likelihood will go away. That's our amenity area is going to be at that northeast corner of the pond. It's shown in white.
And if everything does move forward and this passes through council, you're ready to go, you want to get started, you want to, you know, move forward with the project?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The developer? If not, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, so if anybody else would like to come and speak on this item that has not already spoken, you can still come up. If not, then I'll go ahead and close the consent public hearing and entertain a motion or further discussion.
The road cannot be removed or can it be removed or what are our options if even? Do we have any, I should say?
It would not be on tonight's agenda to have a roadway master plan amendment. Just as I mentioned, our item number 10 on tonight's agenda was a very much similar amendment. The developer can get with traffic engineering and with us, of course, facilitating as development services to have that brought back to the planning commission, which sounds like according to the developer, they desire to do so and have it heard before the command, before the commission again to potentially remove it all the road off the roadway master plan.
I have some comments.
Right ahead.
So I took I took some notes and I had to use the restroom, so I missed a couple of things, but there's, there's, you know, certain aspects, that kind of group, right? You've got, I had about seven people talk about the the nature component of it and not impeding the migratory birds. I had about 10 with that had comments about how this is not in line with the character of the of the adjacent properties. And I had another probably 12 or so about the beach access road, had a comment about drainage, tides, beach, property values, buffer, but but basically those three were the biggest ones, right? And I'll take the tomatoes, but I was the one that kind of spearheaded the arguments in favor of keeping that access road. And the reason why I had arguments in favor of keeping that access road is we have a unique situation on the Texas Gulf Coast where we have the Texas Open Beaches Act where as proud Texans, we protect our rights to access our beaches, right? It's not like Florida where the property owners own their beachfront and control the traffic that that's in front of their beachfront. We also have a unique situation on the Gulf Coast to where everything's south of the of the Corpus Christi Channel between there and Mustang Island is developable property, but we have Mustang Island State Park that's never going to be developed. And then we have another small area of beach to the south of that. And then you have the Pottery Island National Seashore, which is 60 miles of beach that's never going to be developed. And access to the public beaches for people that cannot afford to own property that's waterfront is something that's very important to the citizens of Corpus Christi and having that access is very important. And I've heard I heard a few comments about traffic and one thing that I'll point out traffic-wise and the reason why I was in favor of keeping that access or the requirement to build that access road is we have on weekends where we have, you know, Memorial Day or, you know, you pick it or any time during the whole COVID pandemic, pretty Day or, you know, you pick it, or any time during the whole COVID pandemic, pretty much every day of the week, you have bottlenecks at our access roads because there's too few of them. And whenever all the traffic from the beach, you know, going to the beach is not, you know, too critical, but it's at sundown when everybody comes out and the, and the traffic backs up on those access roads, and then you get into situations on Highway 361 where it's very difficult to get back onto 361 safely and get your way because everybody's been drinking and everything else. But having those, you know, as part of our urban transportation plan, it's been laid out for how many years? Andrew, I think we discussed it a year ago.
UTP's been around since 85, and then the roadway master plan was adopted about 18 months ago or less.
And those beach access roads are laid out at, in one-mile intervals?
Right. The problem with beach access roads is that they never had a design criteria. So it's easy to say, does that mean pedestrian access? Does that mean vehicular access? Does that mean golf carts only? It was never narrowed down in the original urban transportation plan nor the roadway master plan. So yes, it's at one-mile intervals, but the planning process was, was that to mean for cars every one-mile interval or have some of them, you know, folks pedestrians only? That's what wasn't ironed out, nor did it have an engineered design criteria established of how to build the road.
Right. So all that said, you know, I wish that there was a trigger on UTP amendments that would require notification, right? So that way, everybody could have come and provided input on the access road, right? But I'm going to probably break decorum in a few rules, but I want to see a show of hands, if the access road went away, how many would be okay with the PUD as it's presented? So one, two, three, about half?
More than half.
Yeah, that makes it even more difficult. So I don't know. I'll just guess I'll flip a coin. I'm kidding.
Okay.
So Andrew, if this PUD is approved tonight, it has to be approved with the access road. There's no mechanism to remove that tonight?
Right. So between now and council, so I think one thing to bring clear is that with Article 3 of the UDC, we have a series of rules of how, what is the ministerial process of rezoning? How do you actually amend the zoning map? Part of those steps are having a public hearing with planning commission, getting a recommendation. Between tonight and six months from tonight, it must hit city council. So if, regardless if you approve or deny tonight, it's going to go to council at some point. In that six-month process, normally we do it as quickly as we can because folks want to get building, they want to move on their property. We can have an amendment to the roadway master plan between now and council, which would update what would be presented to council as far as a final design with the roadway removed. Again, like I said, regardless of rezoning happening, that roadway as of tonight is required. If that were to change, then the proposed PUD would have to be adapted and amended to remove that roadway off of it.
Can we approve with the stipulation that that does come back to us before it goes to council?
That's difficult to do because you would be hanging your decision on a future decision. And whether or not, how that plays out is actually before you. It's, it would be your decision as the planning commission.
So what guarantees do we have that if it is approved today, that we will see that back in front of us?
I would say, and there's not a guarantee.
Yeah.
There are, and there are no guarantees in life, but the developer is extremely adamant about removing it. If, I would fully suspect if I were to trade places with them and I see an opportunity to have that removed, and I'm sort of hearing feelers from the planning commission members that that might be palatable, I'm probably going to be, try to get on the first agenda to have it heard again so I can update my master plan before I bring it to city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Couple of comments. I just want to thank everyone for coming out. It's always good to see a show as big as this one, seeing the citizens care as much as you do, and thank you for coming out and presenting your thoughts to us. My thoughts on this particular case are, like Commissioner Miller said, it's already zoned a certain way, so whether we approve or deny today, if we deny it, it's still zoned to where they can go and build, you know, 600 houses on it. So us approving, or yeah, us approving this PUD, in my opinion, it takes care of the wildlife issue. The ponds are staying, the big buffer zone between the beach and the houses are staying, so that's a positive. I know that 22-foot lots are not ideal, but they are kind of shifted to 365, to 361. So in my opinion, it's not the best, but it is good. So I don't think it's something that I'm going to go against, but I just wanted to thank you guys again for coming out.
Yeah.
Andrew, can I get just a clarification?
Yes, sir.
So if we were to approve this today, the developer can't go out and start building anything until it goes to city council, correct?
For the zoning, correct. Second half, so as I mentioned, plating and zoning on two sides of the same coin, the plat would still have to be recorded through Oasis County before you can turn over one shovel's worth of dirt, not to mention there are beachfront construction certificates, dune protection permits. There is a litany of items that have to be crossed off the list before you try to put one asphalt's worth of roadway in.
Right. And then it'd be up to city council to decide, we want to take care of this and not require the access road?
It is planning commission's decision first to do an amendment to the roadway master plan. So a separate item has to come before this board, make a determination on whether or not you wish to keep that roadway on there. As of tonight, because it's on the map, it has to remain on the plan. If that were to change between now and that ultimate six-month mark, then the master site plan with this PUD would have to be altered to remove that roadway off of it before it gets to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have any other questions for staff?
Just one more quick comment to echo what our other commissioner said. I really appreciate everybody coming out and being involved. Regardless of which way this goes, I would encourage everybody to advocate for Highway 361 to get expanded. That's something that is in the long-term plan of TechDOT. You know, it would be a great thing for it to get moved up. I think it's on like the 20-year plan, but for it to be built sooner would really help everybody out. You know, traffic is a mess out there sometimes, and, you know, please reach out to TechDOT and your, you know, state and local representatives, it would really help out.
Yes, and I'd like to say, I think all of us up here appreciate all the energy that you have to bring up to us on all of your concerns. We all are here to help make our city a better development, and we need your help and your input, your comments, to be able to help us make the right decision. And we also have to keep in mind the developer, that we are there to help the developer as well to continue developing Corpus Christi, you know, for the betterment of our citizens. So I just want to thank everybody here to make, you know, letting you know that we appreciate you all coming over here with all this energy that you have to stand strong for where you live and wanting to keep it in the best for your living. So I just want to say that. And then this time, I'll go ahead and ask for, entertain a motion?
On me.
I'll be the bad guy. I move that we approve as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so, and please keep in mind, we are a recommending board. This is not a settled thing here. It still has to go to the city council for the definite approval.
For the record, that was a nay from me. I said aye, but...
Matt and Trev, I could just add one quick thing. So we as staff are still available if you have questions, comments. We will still be taking in your opposition letters. If you wish to go ahead and email it to us, you want to stop by the office, pick up the phone, give us a call, we will still walk through every one of these questions you may have. So this is still a road to go to get to city council, and as I mentioned, this is not the only step the developer has. They still have to get through the plating process and then beachfront construction certificates, which involve the general land office. So this is not a one-and-done. Please keep in contact with us if you have questions.
... my statement, but I was unable to finish due to the freedom.
Yes, ma'am. We'd be happy to include that with our...
Yeah, with you tonight.
Yes, please.
All right. Well, at this time, we do have...
I'll be available after the meeting if anyone wants to...
Yeah, you'll be available after the meeting for any questions. Right now, we have a motion and a second, and we approved. It's been approved, that's right. It was approved. So moving on to director's report.
My only director's report is I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.
All right. No other further business, and we are adjourned.